I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge? Mr. Asbury, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
United States of America, the republic on which it stands, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Final meditation. Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
President.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
President.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
President. I want to remind everybody to make sure your cell phones are turned on airplane mode or silent mode. If not, there's a $2,500 fine that goes to Mr. Hinky. So just want to let you know that. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Yes, I have two proposed amendments to tonight's agenda. One is for 24-0-14-R to be added to the agenda under tabled ordinances and resolutions. This was tabled at the previous council meeting to allow for republication.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hines, council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
And this resolution pertains to...
Mishler.
I believe this was related to the annexation.
Is this the...
Area A northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17?
Yeah, if it's going back on the agenda, I did have calls and people ask if they should be here based on that. It was not on the agenda, so I said, you know, it's not here probably the next time. So by adding it to the agenda, I don't want to silence their voice, just so...
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight to one. Mr. Mishler.
Yes, I have a second proposed amendment, and this is to add 24-R-34, supporting Pollinators Week. Be added to the agenda following proposed resolution 24-R-14. This was an oversight from the legal department.
Second then.
There's a motion and a second, council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
What specifically was the oversight, please, the change?
As I understand it, legal was out of town when it got to the point where it needed to be there by 12 noon on that Wednesday. And so they didn't get to it, and that's why they're asking us to do it now.
We're calling out John Esper.
We're not calling out anybody. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Minutes for approval. As for minutes for approval for our last council meeting of May 20th, or the council meeting of May 20th, 2024.
For approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Ms. Hines, all those in favors. Sorry, any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. The floor is yours, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I have the pleasure, we have the pleasure actually, of honoring our Elkhart High School Lions who have won the state championship for Unified Track. I am going to introduce, first off, Dr. Larry Huff, the superintendent of Elkhart Community Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen. It is an extreme honor to be here tonight to represent Elkhart Community Schools, to introduce these people who've kind of been on their war tour for the last few weeks, really going out and about, sharing all the great things that they have achieved, not only on the track, but how they have helped to win the first championship since our high school have merged back in the day. That's a really big deal. But it's just not their athletic accomplishments that I'm most proud of. It is how they care for one another. When you hear them speak tonight, and when you hear their coach speak tonight, you will know that this journey of being not only undefeated champions, they've won every track meet that they've been in this year. They would like to use the word demolished, but I say just tone it down a little bit. They've achieved victory in every time they've stepped on the track. But most importantly, they've achieved victory every time they walk our hallways. Many of them, they have moved on into college, but they definitely will have a legacy that will last on here forever. So at this time, I just want to tell you, I'm very proud and honored to stand here before you tonight as the superintendent of Elkhart Community Schools, and to honor these outstanding young ladies and gentlemen. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making the opportunity tonight for us to just to receive them and to wish them very well. And they will continue on successful, not only next year, because we have some juniors coming back, right? Whew. Anyway, and I do expect us to do quite well next year. So Mayor, thank you tonight for allowing me to just share a little bit about our team.
I'd like to, first of all, introduce the coach, Todd Shealy. And he will introduce a few of the members, and I'm sure have some words to reflect on this marvelous achievement. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen and women. Thank you, Dr. Huff, for being here. It's truly an honor to be in front of everybody today, but it's more of an honor to be able to coach these wonderful student athletes. Real quick, Unified Track combines students with and without cognitive disabilities into a team. When they compete, they compete against likability. So for example, he's not here, but Leland won the 100 meter, and he was in the sixth heat, and you're in 19 seconds. He gets us 10 points. He gets the same amount of points as if he won the first heat or the second heat. Tamari, who's going to speak in just a second, got second in the first heat of shot put. He gets us eight points. Aaron got second in the fourth heat of shot put, got us eight points. So it's a, you have to have a balance of student athletes. But as Dr. Huff said, for me, it's more about the inclusion revolution in student athletes, helping our student population recognize that empathy outweighs sympathy, being there for one another, not just the special education students gaining something from this, but also the general education students gaining something from this. And to be the first in Elkhart history, I think is very special, because these young people will be our champions. They are going to continue to champion the cause of education-based athletics as well as, and maybe more importantly, champion that cause of the importance of inclusion and being there for one another. I do have a couple of them that would like to speak briefly, if that would be okay with all of you. All right, first up is Tamari Morris.
Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. I just want to say Unified Track is a great blessing to me, and not even to me, to my team, because it creates bonds with people. It creates bond with people that I never thought I would create a bond with, you know, walking through the hallways, seeing these people that, you know, really don't get talked to, that we can talk to. And they're not even that, like coming from traditional like football and basketball and all of that. Like just to come to Unified Track and put my love and effort and sweat and tears into them and to win state is all I wanted to do in high school, and it's just a great blessing. Thank you, guys.
Up next is Akaija Baker.
Hello, everyone. All right, I just wanted to talk about Unified Track and why this team is amazing. I didn't have much to say, but Unified Track has been like one of my biggest blessings in life. It's taught me teamwork, it's taught me like familyship. It's taught me lots of things to help me grow personally and help like team grow. Because like last year, I remember I was struggling with a lot of things, but one thing the coach really said to me that spoke to me was that we're unbreakable, we're a family. We're unbreakable, and that connected to me in my heart, and then I realized it's not just me, it's the team as a whole. We fight together through different things to empower people, like all around us, like Elkhart Community Schools. We show how great we are as a team, as a family, so yeah, Elkhart, go Lions.
And last coming up, the rest of Gotten Shy, is Hayden Deenhardt.
So this has been my second year on the team, and I think both the years have been such a joy to be on. I enjoy being on this team every second, every minute, every meet. It's been such an inclusive sport, even to like every single athlete with a cognitive disability or just a general ed student. It's made an impact on my life. It's allowed me to make many new friendships with students that I don't know if I would be able to meet out of this sport. Anybody in this sport, you could say this is probably the best team I've been a part of. No offense to my cheer team, I love my cheer team. But this is probably one of my most favorite sports. This is family, like even with other teams, they're so welcoming. Even, maybe it is a little bit of a competition, but they make everybody feel like family, even if they're not a part of Elkhart High School.
I apologize, I do not mean to lie in front of the council. However, I do have one more young man. And to Dr. Huff's point, this team was perfect. We didn't lose any, anything all season. But the inside of the ring is going to say perfectly together, because that's how we got perfect, was together. But I've got one young man, Brendan Crouch, who has one brief thing he wants to say real quick.
We did it! We, the Elkhart Lions took first place at sectionals, regionals, and state. I support our team!
I don't have to say anything else, he did it. He did it.
So I have a proclamation that I'd like to read for all of you who participated and for all of you in the audience. Prior to doing so, I had a personal reflection on Unified Track, because in 2017, my oldest daughter participated as one of the sport for Unified Track back in 2017, when she was at Elkhart Central. And it was profound, the experience that she had, and helped me to understand this relationship. And as I went to the events and watched, and now to this day, my wife and I still have a relationship with the student, with the special student that she helped, and she is, every time she sees us, she walks up to us and speaks and asks about Tyler. And so I just want to say that for all of you who are in the special classes or the general classes, this is a profound experience, not just from the standpoint of winning a state championship, but my daughter also, after she had completed her undergrad, has gone into ABA therapy on the other side of it because of her experience with Unified Track. So it is profound, the relationships that you're creating, and the things that going to impress upon you for the rest of your lives. Elkhart, the city of Elkhart proclaims June 1st, 2024, Elkhart High School Unified Track Champions Day. In celebration of the Elkhart High School's Unified Track Team's 2024 Indiana High School Athletic Association Championship. Whereas, the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, and exceptional team spirit of the undefeated 2024 Elkhart High School Unified Track Team has enabled these student athletes to earn the 2024 Indiana High School Athletic Association Championship. And whereas, winning the 2024 state championship in June 1st, or on June 1st, 2024, brought honor to the, to Elkhart High School, the city of Elkhart, and Elkhart County on the local, regional, and state level. And whereas, the accomplishments of these athletes on this team was admired by the Elkhart community and demonstrates the importance of inclusion and the character that the athletes at Elkhart High School possess. And whereas, head coach Todd Shealy, and assistant coach Chris Bartley, assistant coach Brian Ketchum, and assistant coach Zach Stone, along with the team members, parents, facilities, and student body at Elkhart High School, was essential in guiding the team to victory with their encouragement and support. Now, therefore, I, Rod Robertson, Mayor of Elkhart, do hereby proclaim the first day of January 2024, as, I'm sorry, first day of June 2024, as Elkhart High School Unified Track Champions Day, in honor of these champions that represented our community in such an outstanding a way. Rod Robertson, Mayor.
Can I get the track team, the Unified Track team, to come up front so we can get a group picture?
Let's see if we get a group picture. And unfortunately, we didn't have the parade standard, but we will get that going, all right?
Paul's in the back. Right out, you've got plenty of room. Slide in, slide in. Everybody good out there? It's in somebody's face. We're going to take about a five-minute recess to let the parents and everybody leave that wants to leave, so we'll reconvene the meeting after that. Reports of council committees. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, June 12th, to discuss proposed orders 24-O-19, appropriating $3,125,000 for the new public safety center. It came back with a due pass recommendation of two to one. Ordinances on second and third reading. Angie, would you read proposed orders 24-O-18 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-18, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3500 Lexington Park Drive, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, from M1 Limited Manufacturing District to B1 Neighborhood Business District.
Got a motion, the second, to adopt this on second reading?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Crabtree. Counsel discussion. Seeing none, we'll open it up for Mr. Trotter.
Good evening. Eric Trotter, the Planning Department. We are here this evening to look at a rezoning on Lexington Park Drive from M1 to B1. The adjacent property owner is looking to purchase the 1.16 acres from the property to the west, and so that the zoning is consistent with the purchaser, they have submitted and we have recommended approval of the rezoning to B1. It more closely matches what they want to do.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric? Mr. Fish?
So Eric, the...
Yes, it will match, that way everything will match on the east side of the Manning ditch.
Mr. Hanky?
Then again, you said the current owner of the adjacent property and their business happens to be...
I believe it's some sort of a security-type business, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not 100% sure. They're going to use it for, they're going to use it for storage for their equipment, for their business.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I took a ride out there to take a look and see what was going on with this ordinance, and the address was 3500, which was the head, head wick...
That is the manufacturing to the east, to the west, so they own a great deal of property out there. So they're just selling off east of the Manning Osborn ditch to the adjacent neighbors to the east.
They did the Majestic Company.
Pardon me, yes.
Majestic, the security company. Okay, that's why I didn't understand. Thanks.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you, Eric. I'll open it up for a public discussion, public hearing. Seeing none, turn it back to the council, any other council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Motion for third and final? Got a motion for Mr. Mishler, second for Mr. Fish. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-18, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3500 Lexington Park Drive, Elkhart, Indiana, 46514, from M1 Limited Manufacturing District to B1 Neighborhood Business District. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed orders 24-O-20 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-20, an ordinance vacating north-south alley between lots 180 through 182 of Beardsley's Fourth Addition to the city of Elkhart, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. Got a motion, the second.
Some move.
Got a motion by Councilman Crabtree, second by Councilman Curry. Counsel discussion. We had a public hearing on this last week, two weeks ago. Seeing none, we'll open up for the public, as anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this alley vacation, or this vacation.
The petitioner is here, if you have questions for the petitioner.
Mr. Firstenberger.
Bill Firstenberger, Executive Director of Ruthmere Foundation. Basically, you have the exhibits that were presented in front of you, and the alley vacation. I would point out that there's a structure that we refer to as the Pony Barn, that's already on Ruthmere property, that long ago, somebody decided to build right there, virtually on top of the property line, with what became the alleyway. And so, you know, by current standards, you could never put that building there without, with no setback. And that just happens to be the side of the building that has the door. Okay? And so, we would very much like to make positive use of that structure for the good of our organization, probably just as a cold storage building for some utilitarian use, and also preserve its nature. It is a historic, small, little bank barn, and in order to do both of those things and accomplish that and make it really usable, we needed to be able to use that door and not negatively impact the structure. So the alleyway became our objective. And in that pursuit, we decided it would make a much easier request of the city to vacate the alley if we owned the adjacent parcels on the opposite side, the west side of the alley, that mirror and match up to it. And we've, the new landowner, who by the way is doing an exceptional job of rehabbing what had been a neighborhood problem property, was very happy to release those two lots to us, and that put us in possession of those, and that brought forward this application for the vacation of the alley, so we can put that all together and have one contiguous property. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Any other council discussion? Mr. Hanky?
I believe it would be Eric. Were there, so we had sent out to all utilities, but there's really not a return page telling if there was any complaint?
There was not. I received that.
David, is your mic on?
It sure is.
Okay.
I'm just a quiet person.
That would be unusual, sir.
I didn't, I didn't hear any.
There were no objections to this alley vacation from any utility companies or anybody...
Okay, because I just didn't see it in the packet, you know, with returns saying, no, no, that's what we're used to seeing. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Third and final, please.
Got a motion for Mr. Hanky, second for Mr. Crabtree, to pass on third and final. Angie, would you read this by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-20, an ordinance vacating north-south alley between lots 180 through 182 of Beardsley's Fourth Addition to the city of Elkhart, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-O-21 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-21, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the Cassopolis Park PUD, a planned unit development under Elkhart County Commission Ordinance Number PC87-41, by increasing the permitted lots under Cassopolis Park PUD with an outlot for further... with an outlot for further development as a casual restaurant.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, second?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mrs. Heinz, second by Mr. Mishler, council discussion. David, do you want to hear Eric first, or you want to? All right.
Good evening. Eric Trotter, the Planning Department. Uh, we are here this evening to review a request for an additional outlot for the Cassopolis Park PUD, which is the former AMC Theater site. There is a new owner for the theater site, and we are looking at its redevelopment. First part of that redevelopment is a restaurant that the owner has a franchise for at the southeast corner of the overall development, which is the northwest corner of the intersection. So it's right at the intersection, I'm sorry, that was not even, I'm sorry.
Was not.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have even gone there. At the northwest corner of the intersection. So this request is a major amendment to allow for the establishment of the outlot, so that restaurant can be developed. We are in the process of working with the ownership and their, and their consultants on drafting a new PUD for the development. But because the restaurant is ready to go and currently in tech review, it's going to be kind of a two-step process, so we want to get them through for the major amendment to get shovels in the ground, to get the restaurant going. And we will come back to you in a few months with a new PUD for the overall development site. That was the fastest way that I could come up with, to keep them moving while we work on the PUD, which will be a little more rigorous than the current one that was approved by the county in nineteen eighty-seven.
David?
So there were, yeah, that was some confusion there, Eric, so we have to look ahead, because in their planning, if we approve this, um, that also pre-approves, um, some later moves, otherwise, you know, quite honestly, they have no way to plan today. So they have a restaurant, and then what is proposed in the complete complex of that property?
At this juncture, they have some interest in the outlots, the future outlots that would be on Cassopolis Street of some sort of other commercial development.
So no residential, no apartment complex?
What we want to look at is some more flexibility for the remainder that would be on the west side, where the actual theater sits now, which is the largest part of, of the remaining land available, for a little more flexibility, and then what, again, what this ordinance that's in effect allows them. We're still kind of working through some of those things, we're hoping, you know, as a staff, we've got our fingers crossed for some additional residential, but we just don't know yet.
And my only concern there is because that intersection, though adding it, having Hardee's right off to the side is just a dangerous spot, and then adding that much more traffic and car congestion?
And to address that, that thought, because it is where it is, we have to work with the state for access. So our engineering department isn't, is working with the state on, on how we access all the approved curb cuts on this property.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned with curb cuts as much as traffic count, the lights, and then the roads, existing roads' ability to handle that load of traffic. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Mr. Fish?
So, that is actual, that's an actual curb cut, I see that angle cut at the intersection. I'd walk, uh,
Their acts, their access will be along Emerson Drive, there won't be any additional access points on Cassopolis. And matter of fact, the, the existing will move farther north.
Probably use the wrong, curb cut wasn't the right one, but there's going to be an alteration.
Yes, yeah, that, it's going to look a lot different by the time we're done.
A little wider turn and all. And the, we're not going to get in trouble with carving out a, a PUD?
No, because we're going to come back and replace the existing Cassopolis Park PUD with a new one. We're in the process of working through that right now, and we're just not ready to go yet.
This, tonight,
This is an interim.
Will be included in the new
Correct.
Corrections.
You're welcome.
Mishler. Can you tell us the name of the restaurant?
Freddy's.
Freddy's. Okay.
Sorry, I had to get permission first.
No, well, thank you.
Thank you, Freddy's.
Do we have samples?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Any, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Eric. Open it up to the public, is anyone in the public?
Terry Lang from the Whitman Office. Our address is fourteen oh-two Mishwaka Avenue in South Bend, represent the petition here. Uh, Eric did a fine representation of what's being done. We currently have one commitment for the corner parcel. It is a Freddy's restaurant, uh, casual dining. Um, there's been interest on additional parcels, but no firm commitment. Part of it's been, interest has been residential in the back, some of it had been commercially oriented along Cassopolis Street. As Eric had indicated, the state has determined that the curb cut that's currently there will not stay at that location. It's a traffic hazard, and it will be a larger traffic hazard for left-turn people going north on Cassopolis Street to turn in there. The proposed new location would be at the extreme north end of the site. It will meet the site distance requirements that the state of Indiana requires for being able to have left-turn lane coming in, as well as people making a left turn going south on nineteen, going to the east then. So we've worked closely with the engineering department to meet those needs for safety concerns, as well as being able to move forward with the commitment we have for the, the restaurant to be located right now. As Eric had indicated, as things get more affirmed up on other, we'll be back here for additional things for the balance of the property, as those further develop. But we, we're looking to break ground as soon as possible, um, with regards to the restaurant site. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Mr. Hanky?
So are there anticipated, um, TIF dollars used, or any form of abatement proposed?
On the, on this first lot that's being developed, none, none at all, this will be all developer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council, any more council discussion? Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for Mr. Hanky for third and final, second for Mrs. Heinz. Angie, would you read it by title? And do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash oh dash twenty-one. An ordinance approving a major amendment to the Cassopolis Park PUD, a planned unit development under Elkhart County Commission Ordinance Number PC eighty-seven dash forty-one, by increasing the permitted lot, lots under, under Cassopolis Park PUD with an outlot for further development as a casual restaurant. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions referred to committee, proposed ordinance twenty-four dash oh dash nineteen was referred to committee and reported out with a two-to-one do-pass recommendation. Angie, would you read this by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash oh dash nineteen. An ordinance appropriating three million one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from the, from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the building and structures account for the acquisition of property for the development, for development as a combined public safety center for the city's police, fire, and emergency communication departments.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this? One second reading, got a motion by Mr. Fish, a second by Mr. Mishler, council discussion. Any council discussion? Uh, just for the council right now. Uh, is Mike on the line?
Yes.
Mike Huber?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes. All right, would you give us that same presentation you gave us at the finance committee meeting, which I thought was pretty concise?
Yeah, I'd like to share the visuals, but I'm not able to present at this time.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Can?
We need a volume to be up, Mike.
Can you guys hear me now? Is that better?
Not much.
Can you hear me? Is this any better?
Is anything on our end?
I, I don't know if I can get any closer to the speakers.
Try it again, Mike.
No, is this not better?
That's better. Get closer to the mic, it's even better, we can get to look at your pretty face.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm just going to share the presentation, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, just like to start, um, this is, this project was part of, is a, is a significant part of the mayor's aspire plan. I'll, I'll, for brevity, I'll, I'll walk through kind of these first few. Um, what I really want to make sure I emphasize, uh, for you all this evening is, um, that the discussions and studies around the development of a new police headquarters actually began under the previous mayoral administration. Uh, it started with a recognition around the space and maintenance issues currently experienced at the police headquarters. As the department has grown, demands on space have increased, and despite regular maintenance, many building and system components are at or near the end of useful life. This will require decisions on economics of reinvesting in this outdated structure or finding a new solution to, to those issues. Like the police department, both nine-one-one communications and the fire admin are also dealing with increased staff demands on space and facilities that were designed for personnel radically different from the original structures, from those that the original structures were designed and built. Uh, have a couple images here that kind of highlight the, you know, the existing conditions that we see, um, in those spaces. The Robertson administration inherited a plan to redevelop the Bear Plant, nineteen building into a new police headquarters. Um, Mayor Robertson was committed to keeping the police headquarters in the downtown as a way to support growing investments in commercial and residential development. Uh, he understood the importance of a strong public safety commitment remaining in the downtown and its impact on our ability to continue the positive private development momentum. The recently completed downtown master plan affirmed this strategy as part of its recommendations around a centralized, public and governmental service core. The administration studied multiple locations, factoring property assembly and acquisition and construction costs. During the process, the Chase Building began to show negative impacts in the downtown based on vacancy and vandalism. Um, these were important, important considerations included, um, that the redevelopment of the Chase Building allowed for many of the key advantages of repurposing the for, the former Bear Plant. And we'll talk about a few of those here. Post-COVID, the future of the Chase Building as a commercial office retail building has become significantly less likely. However, its impact on neighboring retail and office buildings is significant. Uh, any future private development option that would happen there would likely require a significant city investment similar to agreements for Concord Mall, County Road seventeen, and River District Residential and Mixed Use Projects. The option of demolishing the building is estimated to cost approximately two million dollars. As an alternative, allowing the historically significant building, once a jewel in downtown, to be restored into the state of, of the art public facility will help stabilize and improve impacts on the adjacent buildings and really help us continue and see facilitated new development in the second and third street corridors. This building offers ninety thousand square feet of usable space, which is enough to accommodate the current police department, fire department, and nine-one-one communications with, with opportunities and room for them to grow, so we're not in this situation again, um, immediately. The building was assessed to be structurally sound and appropriate for use as a public safety facility with relatively minor modifications. Similar to the proposed Bear Building proposal, reuse of the existing structure creates considerable savings over new construction. Can you guys still hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, here's a map kind of showing the parcels that are intended to be acquired, uh, with the product, with the property. Um, as you can see, I'll take a minute to talk a little bit about the parcels that are immediately adjacent to the building. Could be used to accommodate, uh, parking for the officers and the, and the personnel and the staff that need to have direct access to their vehicles in order to enhance response time should they be needed to, if they were in that building for some reason. Um, the, the, the space behind the Truth Building, half a block away, is an, is an adequate amount of space to, to accommodate a number of the non-emergency, non, um, exceptional personnel. And then we have the shared Patrick City Lot directly across the catty corner from that, um, which allows for over a hundred and twenty-five spaces of, of parking as well. Between the three, uh, three opportunities, we have more spaces, uh, available for parking than what's currently, um, available with the, with the current police building's lot and the space that's under, the, the space that's in use underneath the Marion Street Garage. Uh, just to talk a little bit about process and timeline, as I noted, the city redevelopment and city staff did do, uh, multiple studies, um, to affirm both the structural capabilities of the building, the existing conditions, um, as they sit today, uh, and the ability to, to utilize the space and, and do some high-level space planning layouts of all of the facilities that would be needed in, inside the building. In terms of a timeline moving forward, um, in April nineteenth, at the re, regular redevelopment commission, or April ninth, at the regular redevelopment commission meeting, uh, the commission authorized staff to make an offer to purchase. Um, between April ninth and May fourteenth, staff negotiated the purchase agreement. On May fourteenth, at the regular meeting, the redevelopment commission, um, passed approval of a purchase agreement contingent on the council funding for this project. Um, we're here this evening asking for the appropriation, your consideration of that appropriation request. Um, and all things going smoothly from here, we would anticipate, uh, a closing on the property to occur sometime in August. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Huber? Mr. Hanky?
You know, the questions keep coming, and I think we're going too fast, too soon, uh, in a, in a sense, because, uh, number one, I, I would like, and I'm requesting and obligating, uh, the MAI appraisal for that building. My understanding is, the city did not provide the appraisal, but the owner provided their own appraisal?
Um, if I could, if I could address that quickly, um, the city actually conducted two MAI appraisals um, before we made the offer. Our offer, offering price was based on the average of those two appraisals. Um, in our negotiations for the acquisition, the property owner did in fact also give us an MAI certified appraisal, um, which is how we came to the final negotiation of the agreed final purchase price.
And then I would like a copy of those appraisals. Additionally, um, the property, I think we all agree, was for sale for some time, for six-hundred thousand. The owner paid three-hundred thousand, uh, more importantly, if you'd look at the tax record, she argued down uh, the assessed value of the property, which was, um, you know, it's seven oh-five in twenty-three, seven oh-five, seven hundred. And successfully argued down, uh, the twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, but less than three-hundred thousand. This is not including mold and asbestos mediation. Or can, and then my biggest issue is consuming of downtown parcels from municipal non-taxpaying entity when we're actually pushing to create the demand downtown, we're the ones consuming all the land, which really goes against what we're trying to approve in twenty forty. It just seems like, um, quick pick of properties, we don't want to hole there, this is not at all by traffic what we would like to see, especially if we have the two-lane roads coming out. Is this also, Mike, in a TIF district?
This is in the downtown TIF district, uh, Mr. Hanky, I'd like to, to talk to your comments about
To the downtown TIF district.
I'm sorry, it is in the downtown TIF district. Yeah, I'd also like to take a minute to, I'd like to take a minute to address your, your comments on the use of the property all for the parking lots. Um, what we're doing is we're looking at how we can meet a short-term need for the parking. Um, one of those lots is absolutely right now, a, a development shovel-ready site for housing, and we would anticipate Um, one of those lots is absolutely right now, a, a development shovel-ready site for housing and we would anticipate using it for that. Um, one of those sites, as the downtown plan indicated, a park once strategy, we're finding the right opportunities in the right places to create, um, structured parking. And when those things happen, then we're able to convert those other parcels that will be surface parking in the short term to development sites in the future. So in fact, we are following the plan and we are looking ahead to how we can fully utilize all of the parcels that are being acquired with this, um, for their highest and best use.
So my understanding is, um, aside from the three million dollars tonight, there's forty to forty-five million proposed for the renovation. And then at some later date, you're gonna add a parking garage. If it's three deck, um, you're looking at ten million on average. Um, and then again, I, I'm looking at this from a financial point of view and what it means to downtown. And it does mean that your government's growing too much and in the way. Secondly, we're, what little tax benefit is in that area? All businesses combined are still privately held, paying taxes. That goes into the TIF, which develops that same area of downtown. Uh, that TIF money goes away. Municipal government does not pay that tax, so we're actually diminishing the return of a TIF. So it's contrary to what I believe personally, uh, should be happening. Government shouldn't be the one rescuing building, shouldn't be the one in the way of future development. And sure, shouldn't be building monuments to itself at the tune of forty-five plus million dollars. Uh, so, yeah, I will never support this piece. I'm just wondering if anybody else.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Mister, Mister Holtz. Mister Holtz has the floor, David. You just told us you weren't. No, you just told us you weren't gonna support it. I don't know what else you were gonna say, but Mister Holtz currently has the floor.
One of you guys do some homework and look at the records.
Mister Holtz has the floor.
Order, gentlemen, there will be no attacks on personality by council members.
Or controlling of conversation.
Uh, Mike, I wanted to ask, uh, which, uh, current properties that we have, would we hope to turn back over to the private sector, you know, once this is done? I'm actually also interested in, uh, if there's been any thought about the annex. I'm just wondering if there's room to move, uh, some of the people who are currently at the annex, uh, into that space as well. I was thinking about IT in particular, but I don't know. So, two-part question. Thank you.
Um, that, thanks, Councilman. Uh, first and foremost, immediately, the, the lot at the corner, I believe, at Fourth and Franklin, um, would be, or Fourth and High, would be the first initial lot that we would initiate some private development on. Um, additionally, once the existing, uh, once this would be renovated and all of the departments would be moved, um, the site of the existing police station, um, would be made available as a, as a private development site. Um, we've done some preliminary numbers on that and, and the, the, the projections are for the type and scale of development that would be appropriate there. Um, we would see more new investment into the tax base of the city and increment into the TIF um, than any revitalization or renovation of the existing Chase building privately would provide in that same, um, space. So we actually see a, a future net gain by us being able to, to take the property that's on the river and convert that to mixed use in, 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 in exchange for, um, renovating the Chase building. Um, in terms of other departments with space available in the, in the new, in the new facility, we've done some high-level space planning around the public emergency departments right now for the public safety center. We haven't evolved that far enough to know how much additional space may or may not be available in there for other departments, but certainly we would, we would consider those things and see if there are opportunities to get other buildings and properties the city owns back into private hands and, and, and into the tax base as well.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for answering these questions, Mike. Um, located Catty Corner from the Chase building, we have the county courthouse. And I am under the understanding that the county courthouse is being relocated, uh, to Goshen. And so that property at some point will also most likely be up for private development. And that is a significantly large, uh, chunk of property. So right now, the Chase building is not being utilized by, by any firm. And it would cost, I believe, roughly two million dollars to demolish. Or we would have to, uh, utilize TIF funds or edit funds to support some kind of commercial growth there. And we don't necessarily know how much funds that would be. And even then, at the end of the day, we would still be in need of a public safety facility. Um, say we don't use the Chase building and we want to build a public safety facility from the ground up. How much money is that going to cost?
Well, our, our initial estimates at one of the locations for, I believe it was a fifty to sixty thousand square foot building, uh, was in the fifty million dollar range.
So fifty million dollars, does that include land, land acquisition and, um, any demolishing that has to be done or just from the ground up?
Yeah, that would include, um, acquisition. I don't know there was demolition in that, but that would be for acquisition as well.
Okay. So fifty million compared to forty-three point one million. And we would most likely still need to provide some additional parking at some point as well. So that parking garage would likely still need to be involved in the process as it is also part of the downtown master plan as well. So we can factor that in as well. So right now, we're looking at forty-three point one million dollars roughly to purchase the Chase building and renovate it. Compared to fifty-plus million dollars just for the purchasing of, or the ground-up construction of another facility. And we would still have the Chase building that would need significant public support through edit funds, TIF funds to turn into a viable property. And as Councilman Holtz stated, we, and how you replied to his questions, we will have significant other uh, public property downtown, the police station, maybe the annex as well as other, and the county courthouse that can be converted to uh, private development down there to support the tax base as well. Uh, one thing I do want to point out real quickly is during the twenty nineteen discussion, President Dickerson stated that the city could have up to two hundred and fifty million dollars of capital investment and still be very solvent. And that is on page six of the October ninth, twenty nineteen minutes for anyone interested in seeing those. So if that statement was true in twenty nineteen, it is definitely true today. Thank you.
I'm glad you quoted a Republican. Thank you.
Thank you. This time I open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Sir, I think you.
Um, well, I appreciate, um, Mr. Mishler, uh, for, for doing the rundown there. Um, my name's Thomas Kalijia. And, uh, I reside at five hundred State Street. Um, you know, I, I kind of wonder what the, what the county, you know, there's been this back and forth with the courts building and I kind of wonder, have we offered him three and a half million dollars for the county courts building? I mean, they don't want to give it to us, understandably so. It's their asset, right? But, um, we, have we had those conversations? Have we looked at what that potential build-out would be and what, how that might actually be a better solution? Um, I'm here tonight to kind of question, um, how we get to the point, you know, we, we're talking about this property and how it's become a liability and we're gonna have to spend money in order to deal with it. But how does the property owner who spent three hundred thousand dollars on it not bear some kind of burden? I mean, we're gonna have to rescue the building. We're gonna have to do this and that. They bought the building. The, the reason it was bought and they bought it was no one else wanted the liability. So why are we removing their liability? I drove by tonight. There's broken windows. There's a piece of glass just even missing and out of its seal and, and you look all around the building and it hasn't been maintained. So they bought it with the expectation to do nothing. I mean, they haven't kept the AC working. They probably don't have security. It might not even have power. So if you truly assess the value of the building, its current state isn't maintained. And then they, they've done nothing. I mean, you could go pull weeds. We could all, we could have a, a community cleanup in the first district and go down there and pull weeds all day a, and bring the community together, but, but that's not our responsibility. That's a business owner who bought the property and not, and did not maintain it. I mean, I, 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 I'm just, it's, it's, it's kind of Elkhart's whole problem, right? We don't enforce code. And then when we have an ordinance, I've been here to talk about it before, we have ordinance in black and white. And we add words to make it our own truth. It's not my truth as I read it because I can't add words to a document. Nor should the city be able to. And nor should the city be protecting this property owner from code enforcement. If it's not secure and if it's not properly maintained, that's the liability of who the person that bought it. They bought it at a fire sale. Great. That doesn't mean you get to hang on to it until the city comes along and says, well, jeez, we're gonna have to solve this problem someday, so let's solve it now. And then we're gonna pay another million dollars over what our assessment was. And I don't even know if it's worth two million. If it costs two million to take it down, that's the liability of the property owner. Should code enforcement do its job? It's not the burden of the taxpayers because none of the other taxpayers or people from other cities bought it. Because typically in other cities, they have code enforcement. So they didn't buy the property because that's a big burden, big liability, but not in Elkhart. It's not a liability. So I think it kind of comes back to, to how do we bear the burden when we don't execute the tools that are in front of us? Um, I, I'm gonna quote, um, Rod Robertson here because some time ago, when the county wanted to move the courts out of downtown, he asked to slow things down. This is in the South Bend Tribune. Um, sorry, I don't have the exact date, uh, Rod, if I'm quoting you, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase. He just asked for some more time, community engagement. And I realize that's a dangerous thing to engage the community, um, but I don't think we should be protecting a buyer. I mean, a million dollars over our appraisals? A million dollars can go a long way to help downtown. Could go a long way to help a historic district who's had their thumb, the city's thumb. That's like the only code enforcement in the whole city is the historic district. Okay? And, and I've been there almost twenty years and there hasn't been a hundred thousand dollars spent on my street. With the exception of La Casa, who built, you know, with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of city money and didn't follow.
All right, sir, you need to get back to, what's, what's, what's the agenda's about?
Well, I'm sorry. I, I can get long, I can get long-winded.
It's okay.
But, but I hopefully that makes a point that we're protecting somebody with, with bad intent. They didn't buy the building and, and maintain it. Which is essentially Elkhart's whole problem. That building should be worth ten million if Elkhart was worth ten million, but it's just not. Elkhart, we have to be real about it. There's no businesses coming in to occupy that building. And great, we can repurpose it. I just don't think we can be the bailout for a business investment with bad intent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we turn it back to council, council discussion. Who were? Who's online? Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. So, uh, my name is Louis Ann Deputy. I reside at fifteen seventeen Meadow Lane in Elkhart, Indiana. Um, and I, I did have a couple of questions in regards to this. Uh, I would like to know if the city council, serving as our legislative body and our elected officials have seen the two fair market appraisals that the citizens have paid for through the redevelopment commission? Uh, and in that regard, if so, I would like to know the average of the two independent appraisals. Uh, the reason I ask this is we're assuming the, uh, the original purchase price that the redevelopment commission, uh, had said was two point two million dollars. We don't really know if that's the average of the two appraisals because there has been a historic practice with the redevelopment commission as of late in regards to Freight Street as well as a vacant lot at, um, Prairie Street that they paid more than the average of the two appraisals, which goes against what the code says. Uh, and I would like to know that. Um, and I would like to know what comparables were used in those appraisals to come up with the supposed two point two million average. Um, the issue, and I think it, it, it's been raised, is by the redevelopment commission continually paying more than the average of the two appraisals. It's sending the message to anybody who's negotiating with the city, we're gonna pay that. And that falls on the backs of the citizens. Because what that's doing is it's falsely increasing the value of the property. So when we get our assessments, it's going to increase our assessment, so we're paying more taxes. So it really is falling on the backs of the citizens and I have to believe that's why when the state code was written, it said you shouldn't be paying more than the average of the two appraisals. Um, I understand that the, I, I'm not, I won't get into if, if the, the Chase building is the appropriate place to put the public safety building and the fire administration and, um, the, the nine one one. Um, it's more the issue of what are we paying? Especially because we're gonna have to refurbish it for anywhere from forty to forty-five million dollars. Um, that we, in the finance committee, it was shared that that's going to be paid for with local income tax bonds that'll come out of the general fund. Um, Councilman Mishler, I appreciate you pointing out what, uh, former councilperson Dickerson said back in twenty nineteen. Um, don't know if that same statement would be made because spending and the economy has changed a little bit since then. So my question is, by issuing those bonds, if you do this public safety that building, how will it change our municipal rating? Additionally, how is the city gonna be paying for the highly overpass at thirty million and at least two new fire stations at maybe seven million dollars apiece? These are really important questions. We can't look at things just one piece of the puzzle at a time. You have to look logistically. Because many of you were up there in December and this administration was up there in December when the Board of Public Works had to come and, and make the decision to, to raise the water and sewer rates because previous administrations had failed to plan for that accordingly. And the people who pay the price are the people that we serve. You serve, the people who elected you, and that's our citizens. They're already gonna be seeing a rise in their water and sewer rates. And based on us truly spending money and paying for properties appropriately, they're going to end up seeing an increase in their property taxes. Which were hurting the elderly who are on fixed income, were hurting those who may be struggling to pay their bills. So I really, I do, I implore you, please, really, as, uh, Citizen Kalusha said, can we put a halt on it? Really take it to the citizens who this impacts. Or don't pay these overinflated prices. Please. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor and the other council discussion. Mister Curry, was your hand up?
Yes. Hey, I'd just like to say that we've been talking about supporting our police with a new facility for a long time. COVID stepped in and kind of slowed things down. And as I stated at the finance meeting, I took a tour of the police station many years ago. It's crowded. You know, it makes things hard for our policemen to function at a high level when you don't have space to do what you need to do. They're mandated to keep all this evidence. If you've ever seen their evidence room, it's amazing the stuff they have to keep for many, many, many years. We need to get them some space. And I didn't like the bare property because I didn't like that fact that I didn't think it would be very accessible to get p- police response to the south side of town in a timely fashion. I was told by then the chief that they would use Napanee Street, which I personally don't think would work with the traffic on Napanee Street. You know, and our mayor, when we found out through the grapevine, we wasn't informed that the county building was gonna be moved to Goshen. They didn't call over here and tell us that. Our mayor put a plan together to reach out to them, say, hey, why don't you stay in Elkhart? You guys remember that? Why don't you stay in Elkhart and we'll build a new public safety building along with a new county courthouse? Because most of the county court trials and cases. Because most of the county court trials and cases are handled in Elkhart. I think it's about 65, 70% of them are in Elkhart building. A building which everybody says is in disrepair. So we spending, what, over a hundred million dollars to build a new one and, and haven't even have a plan for this one? And we are county taxpayers in the city of Elkhart. So yeah, we should have been informed that we were gonna be losing our county courts building downtown, which do impact our downtown and everybody that work in downtown and our attorneys that have offices near the county court building downtown. All that's gonna be affected. But we wasn't informed. But we do need to quit talking about supporting our police and get it done and, and get them a new facility that will help them do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fish?
Thank you. So I would just like to thank the mayor for providing the right information, answering the questions I had. Police Chief, Mike Huber. These are questions that, um, all the council members have, and we've had weeks to, weeks and months to discuss this. And, um, you've answered all my questions. And I am ready to move forward, but we have to make sure that we're accurate in, um, the facts and figures. And some of the online and some of the stuff that was said here in, in previous meetings is not quite accurate. You know, we, we can't just do whatever we want when, we take whatever, um, whatever numbers a, an auditor gives us or an assessor gives us. Um, we've done everything by the book. Uh, we're, we're very frugal with the money, all of us, all nine of us. So I think what we've, um, I think what we're scared of is the, is the change that's gonna come. And we're going to design and build, rebuild, remodel a building that is sitting there that will revitalize things like communication, accessibility, public safety, uh, faster call times. There's gonna be so much that comes out of this, but we can't be scared of the change that comes when we spend taxpayers' dollars in a, in an investment way. And I've talked about that property in the previous administration and this administration. And, um, I think it's a very good investment, and we've gotta get used to the idea that, that we're gonna take something that's been sitting there since 1975 that is literally hindering the quality of service from our police service and fire, uh, to a degree and 911, and consolidate it into a building that'll be state-of-the-art, high-quality, uh, energy-efficient, and, and a better investment for tax dollars, taxpayers than the cobbled-up mess that we've had to deal with since 1975. So, thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Well, speaking of facts, um, I didn't find many in that. I, I think a real tax record from today is pretty factual from the assessor's office. You can plead down your case. It was the owner that pled the case that the building didn't hold value. So that somewhat is the, you know, the pot in the kettle, so to speak. It doesn't change call times. Police are in six zones. They're not leaving from a building and answering calls. They are already patrolling their zones as regulated. They may have a backup sergeant or lieutenant coming from a station. But, but again, we have substations in the city of Elkhart. I think Washington Gardens has one. So it does not affect call time. It affects maybe some training, uh, in a larger space. It affects how we can grow in records, um, management and so on, probably more evidence. I realize our current station is, has met its worth probably years ago. I'm not arguing that whatsoever. Minus simply, we had a 9-0 on the Bear Property. Doesn't mean they're not on the south side, but there's, the patrol cars are still where they're supposed to be because they're always out on the road. Number one. Number two, I proposed the Sears Building, and now it's a nice nonprofit organization paying no taxes, but that would have been a great place, in my opinion. I think that was one of seven to 10 different places that we looked. But rather than saying, Mr. Fish, that it will do all these things, I would like it in writing. I would like it in print because otherwise it's just an opinion as valuable as the rest of us having an opinion. To me, this isn't a financial equation. Bear in mind, the Bear Building was at 30, maximum 35 million. Um, I'm not sure of the other structures, but that was the one that we had hard numbers on. And so when we're making comparisons, I would rather have a large police station outside of the downtown proper and leave this for real businesses because that's what we developed, starting with the River District. Now, if we wanna end that with more sirens and police cars and congestion, we can do that. It just doesn't help our downtown and our civic plan. Simply put, financial, we could have done better. Location, we should do better. That, that's my argument.
Thank you. Mr. Michler?
Thank you. Uh, one thing that I will go back to briefly is when it was mentioned that the 50 million dollar floor-up building, uh, would only provide, what was that? 60,000 square feet. For 40 million dollars, we're getting 90,000 square feet. Another thing to mention and remember about the Bear Property is one of the reasons that that was not chosen was so we could utilize that for private investment. In our packet tonight, we have a tax abatement for ATC Components, which has invested 21 million dollars in that area. 21 million dollars over 150 jobs that may not have happened had that gone through, as well as we had a rezone, I believe, last year or the year before for an additional medical facility along Bristol Street, which definitely would not have happened had a public safety building been there. We also have to remember those numbers from 2019. 35 million dollars in 2019 dollars is a lot more money, uh, today. 40 million dollars in 2024 dollars compared to 35 million dollars in 2019 dollars. Adjusted for inflation, that 35 million dollars would be well above what our proposed, um, budget is for this facility. Something to consider as well. Um, the building has sat vacant for a while, folks. It has had no commercial investment. Um, as Mr. Colusia pointed out, it's been a, a source of code violations and an eyesore. We're taking a property that hasn't had function and hasn't had use, and we are repurposing it for the betterment of our citizens, and we are saving money doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Fish?
Yes, I'd just like to correct the record that, uh, in the previous administration, I voted against the Bear Building, and, uh, I thought it was a bad decision then, and it would be a bad decision now. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky? President Dawson?
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion for Mrs. Hines, a second for Mr. Michler. Angie, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-19, an ordinance appropriating $3,125,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the Buildings and Structures, Structures Account for the Acquisition of Property for the Development as a Combined Public Safety Center for the City's Police, Fire and Emergency Communications Departments. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Michler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky? President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. Table ordinance and resolutions, proposed ordinance 24-0-10 will remain table. Proposed ordinance 24-0-14R, can I get a motion to remove this from the table?
So moved.
Motion for Mrs. Hines. The second, second one, Mr. Michler. Angie, would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-14R by title only?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-14R, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East Area A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 16, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of removing this from the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Motion carries. Gotta get a motion and a second to adopt this on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr., Mrs. Hines, a second by Mr. Fish. Angie, would you read this by title, please? Title only.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-14-R, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East Area A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 16, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Good. Council discussion. Saying none. Open it up to the public.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can.
Great. So, um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to talk a couple of things, um, on, on this ordinance that's a little bit different than what we discussed last, last week or last meeting, and provide an opportunity to update, um, my conversations with Baker Tilly on the impacts and the fiscal impacts of these two annexations, uh, in Oslo Township. Um, let me start with that and first say, um, we are, we, we've had multiple conversations with them. It's my understanding Oslo Township is actually contracting with Baker Tilly to do an analysis, um, to quantify those, those impacts. Um, for, one, a couple of things I do know that we did confirm. Um, first, all of this assessment, all of this property, um, and all of the assessed valuation in this, in this area was included and is included in the county's northeast corridor TIF, which was established some 30-plus years ago. So the only impacts we're really talking about in terms of assessed valuation would relate only to the official base assessed valuation from 30 years ago. And it's my understanding that combined, all of it is less than $100,000. So, so one, the increment of the, the, the benefits of the 34 million dollars that we discussed last, last meeting, uh, has all been captured by the county's TIF. Um, secondly, I wanna make a distinction between the Oslo rate and the Oslo fire levy. So Oslo Township has a, a special fire levy. Um, not all Oslo Township residents pay the Oslo fire levy, and that's the levy that's used to generate their fire coverage. Um, Oslo residents inside the city limits, um, do not pay the Oslo fire levy. So any impacts or changes to the Oslo fire levy would not be felt by any Oslo Township residents who live inside the city. Um, in fact, any changes or switch of assessed valuation of the regular Oslo rate, the regular Oslo levy, not counting any of the special levies, um, would not see any distinction whether you're in the city or whether you're in the county. Um, so any, there would be no impacts to the general Oslo rate just by the annexation of the city, um, versus the, those counties. The only impacts would be to the fire levy and any other special levy that the township may have. And those are the, those are the impacts we're trying to quantify, um, based on some of those things. But again, the other core component is here, is that it's all, all of the incremental AV that's, that's been accruing in that space has all been captured by the county TIF and isn't relevant to the conversations of the impacts we're talking about on any of the levies, um, per se, at this time. Um, so this, the second annexation we're talking about tonight is again vacant land at County Road 4. Um, the total assessed valuation currently, not at the base level, but currently is, is about $125,000. Again, of the entire area combined, it's less than $100,000. Um, and so we, we again feel there are minimal impacts from a tax standpoint to the annexation here. Um, again, this is a voluntary annexation, um, and it is being done in order to facilitate additional, um, industrial development, um, in, in that corridor. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it was, uh, fairly apparent, although not voiced, that that was a county TIF. Now, Mike, tell me when that TIF expires?
So I believe, um, there are varying deadline dates of that TIF. Um, I know there was some bonding that was done...
2039.
Probably, probably 10 years ago or so to extend the life of that 25 years, I think.
Yeah, the answer is 2039. That's when the TIF expires. So my question then, what should have been, in my opinion, should have been a discussion is how do we reconcile that TIF with the county? Dissolve it? Or are we splitting it with county? How, how does that work?
Um, currently, it goes and accrues to the county for their, uh, use. And I believe the, the way this, it works is that, I think this was presented in the fiscal analysis, um, when it's annexed, then the city gets that assessed valuation back into our, and we're allowed a, a special, um, a special levy adjustment.
So the county is expected to transfer that land TIF, even though, is there additional land that is not coming into the city that is included in the same TIF?
I, I believe that's the way statutorily it's supposed to work. That's part of what we're doing with the study with Baker Tilly and the county currently.
Yeah, my question was, the property that the city will acquire, the TIF encompasses more than just those partials.
That's correct.
Yeah. So in fact, then, it actually nullifies a TIF. The city would need to adopt that TIF again to legalize it with the city or with the county, I'm sorry. And we have done that once before. But my big point of this was, this should have been a discussion at the beginning, not just through questioning, do we go back and say, oh, by gosh, it's in a TIF, that's why there's only $8 going to the fire department? Oslo Township, uh, through the county, uh, developed this TIF to get something rolling, and then the city of Elkhart steps in. My only issue with that is, um, you know, the feedback on everyone else. In fact, uh, the fire department, we know, is obligated by law to be funded at 100%. And if money is taken away from them, more people have to pay a greater deal, a, a greater portion, um, for that fire department. There's fewer people paying for it. They're not getting the blessing of that extra money, extra TIF because of redevelopment. So there were several things on here that made no sense at all, brought it up at the last meeting. One was, uh, the tax remedy, and that is how it would affect, affect Oslo Township. And I would have thought that we would have had that information ready at hand, understood it, and then walked right through tonight and said, we have an agreement with, uh, Elkhart County. This is how the tax, this is when they're going to partial out our portion of the tax, and we've made a, um, inter-office memorandum, a, a letter of understanding or whatever, that we take over a TIF, but this council would have to recognize that TIF and absorb it to the city as a TIF.
I, I don't believe that's accurate. I don't believe we can absorb a, a county TIF.
So, it goes back to my original question. The expiration date is 2039. We take the property, they can't send us that TIF because it's a divided TIF then, county and then city portion. So either we agree that this is how it will be divided through county tax, and the city's gonna have to take some action to recognize that TIF. It's not ours. It belongs to the county. We didn't pass it, they did.
Would the county then be able to give, uh, the Oslo Township some financial assistance out of that TIF to make up for what they're losing?
That would be legally permissible, yes.
Okay, so Oslo Township should probably be getting with the county and figuring out how they can make up that shortfall out of the TIF that they're getting.
I, I think that's the smaller burden, Mr. President. I think the bigger burden is, we better understand how we're gonna divide that TIF upfront before we go through this process.
When we get there, we probably will. Right now, we're just annexing it.
So let's spend the money and find out. Okay.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of these annexations because we are growing, but I asked you the question about Glen Drive. You know, we're moving closer and closer to these people, and many of them, probably in the future, as I've talked to people with these septics and stuff, they're failing and makes the city look a lot more attractive. And we're gonna be so close to that residential street at County Road 4 and 17. If they come to us, I hope we already have a fee, because we, we can't give our services away. What it would cost if we were... because we can't give our services away, what it would cost if we were going to agree to tie them in, since we're going to be right next door to them with city sewer and water.
Check your TIF boundaries.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up for the public. Is there anyone in public who would like to speak with regards to this?
Yeah, I would love to, if you could hear me. My name is Doug Reese, five, one, two, three, four.
We need to see you as well as hear you.
Sorry, my apologies. Is that better?
It's better, sir.
All right, perfect. So, I'm the president of the HOA on Simonton Lake. So, there's a few things that, you know, we look at. The biggest thing are the tax dollars taken away from Oslo Township, which you've obviously been talking about, fire, EMS, you know, that, those funds shifted to the city. That's certainly a big concern of ours and something we want to keep an eye on. We've, I haven't seen a plan, a full plan. I've looked for it online and been trying to find something to be able to describe exactly what's going to happen here. But there's a huge rumor that there's a multi-unit housing that's eventually going to be planned for that annexation, which is going to add a significant amount of traffic to County Road 4. You know, since the city hasn't annexed most of 4, is the county on board for the necessary modifications that are going to be required to enhance that area? Lastly, there is concern, there's DNR-owned protected wetlands adjoining to the north of that property. You know, just want to make sure how, you know, these lands are going to be protected with the anticipated development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else online? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing or turn it back to the council? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, was there something for me I couldn't hear?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the jobs you do, first. Second, my name is Mike Smith. I am the fire chief at the Oslo Fire Department. When we talk this evening about TIFs and money and bonds, that's beyond me. My job is public safety. I do have grave concerns with the city's annexation proposals that far out of response times for the ambulance, the fire trucks, the police department. And I hope you guys take in consideration the people that we are supposed to protect, because that's my job, to protect people. Oslo's been there since 1958. We've grown to a 2.2 million budget, so we're not small potatoes. I am now Elkhart Fire, and I will give them, Elkhart Fire and PD both, rock stars. You guys are amazing departments. No fault of their own, they're just spread very thin. So, I do worry about public safety on that aspect, only because the staff. The staff is just not adequate for what the city has grown. And I know the city can grow. It has to grow. Can't halter that at all. But please consider public safety. I'm not asking you to stop annexation, I'm just asking you to vote from the mayor, let's take a step back, grow your infrastructure, place a station out there. We had meetings with Station 6. Station 6 is a 1964 station, one single engine, no ambulance. Your ambulance for that area is coming from downtown. Build the station, staff it with the manpower and equipment needed to take care of the people that you're going to be taking into the city. That's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council.
One second, one second. Brian, don't leave. I'm going to take presidential privilege here. No, no, no. All right. Go ahead, chief.
I just want to let you guys know, when we place the new station, it'll be just a hair south of County Road 6 on the east side of the road on Ada Drive. NFPA is the National Fire Prevention Association, which sets standards. We don't adopt all of their standards, but they set response time standards. They give us 240 seconds to get from where the new station will be out to that northeast corridor in an eighty-second, what's called a turnout time, which usually doesn't take us eighty seconds by the time we receive the call, get our turnout gear. So, we have over five minutes to get out to that northeast corridor where the new station will be sitting. So, those times work out fine for us. We'll be responding from that new station with an engine company, a ladder truck, and an ALS ambulance when the new station is complete.
Okay. Any questions, old chief? Mr. Mishler.
Thanks. Thank you, chief. Now, is that response time counting ambulance from Central?
Well, when, no, when the new station is built.
The current, the current station.
No, the current station, as we currently are, we are out of range. Once the new station is built, and that is in the process, we'll be within plenty of, we'll respond with more than what's required by the National Fire Prevention Association.
And after an annexation happens, is it a light switch that we immediately have to take over coverage, or is it phased in where Oslo can still provide services there for a year or so?
Well, what we're going to immediately take over, what we're going to do is we're going to keep a paramedic on Engine 6, which is where it presently sits on Oslo Road. There'll be an ALS engine company, advanced life support. They can get there and provide the immediate treatment until the ambulance arrives from Central Station or Station 4.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I need to close the public hearing. Thank you, chief. Yes, I'm sorry. You got, let me, let me bring him back, let me get the public hearing out of the way, and then you can ask, when we come back to the council, you can ask the chief a question.
Thank you, council. I'm Chris Potratt. I'm an attorney at Warwick and Boyne. We're at 861 Parkway Avenue, Elkhart. I represent the petitioner and also happen to represent the Elkhart Redevelopment Commission. So, I just wanted to address a couple of points very briefly. First, there was a question about whether housing is going to be on this site. This is a non-contiguous annexation. I think it's actually the first one that Elkhart's ever had. But by law, that property has to be developed as an industrial park, so it's not possible to build housing at this property. And then I wanted to briefly address the TIF issue. So, this, my understanding, I'm not aware of any plans to make this a city TIF area. The county will keep this as a TIF area. And basically, as it is now, the base assessed value, at least for this particular property, there is no development there. But anything that gets built, it'll be captured up to the existing tax rate by the county TIF. But once it becomes part of the city, that additional, what is your tax rate? A dollar per hundred thousand, per hundred dollars of assessed value, something along those lines. That additional dollar that gets assessed as property tax, that comes to the city. So, the existing property taxes are still going to be paid the same way to the county TIF. The new taxes that go on top of that for the city all come to the city. So, that's the way that's going to work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Returning it back to the council, Mr. Henke.
So, the gentleman just spoke, and my understanding then is the county will still capture its baseline within the TIF, and the city will get the full benefit of everything new and improved built, and that will come directly to the city outside of the county TIF. And he's saying yes in the affirmative. And then the second part of my question for the chief. The city has purchased a property on Ada, I believe?
Yes.
And when will that station be built, manned with the trucks that are supposed to be there? What is the drop dead date?
They will, they will start breaking ground in March of 26, 25, I'm sorry, in approximately a year build time.
So, we are saying, because we're talking about all the new development and everything else out there, and it's probably going to beat us as far as our new station being built. We have between this annexation date and March 25 as groundbreaking, correct? Groundbreaking, not completion, not hires, not the trucks moving and everything being operational, we have a gap. And I think that's what the chief had been talking about from Oslo Township. We're worried about the gap. I meant Oslo Township adding a medic demonstrates that we know there may be a bigger need.
Well, presently, we're Oslo Township Fire Department, since they're out of range also.
I'm sorry.
Oslo is presently out of range of that northeast corridor also, per NFPA. They're only about a mile north of where our Station 6 sits now. They're out of range for the northeast corridor also.
I heard that we were out of compliance with ambulance runs. Is that what you said?
No, I am saying that where Oslo Township sits presently and where our Station 6 sits presently is probably less than a mile apart. So, that northeast corridor being annexed is not any, under any better protection from Oslo, not a knock on them than it is from us because they're not that much closer than we are.
But right now, because ambulances are coming out of Central, we're not within the timeframe that is recommended.
Neither department is.
Right, so.
But we will have ALS personnel. We won't have an ambulance, but we'll have ALS personnel at Station 6, where it presently sits.
Right, so we're trying to make that up. And even though the build-out isn't really there, the traffic and the traffic and all the people commuting are still there. And it is a busy place. County Road 17, County Road 4, County Road 6, there's a lot of cars. We can do the traffic count. My issue with it is, if we're responding so we can get better in compliance with a medic on a fire truck, there's just a big gap. And that's what I was speaking to the last meeting. It'd be nice had we had a station at least groundbroken and ready to go within six months, as opposed to saying we're breaking ground just about a year out.
Even our, even our timeframe of building the station is in compliance with National Fire Prevention Association standards. A city can't keep up building fire stations with the annexation process. There's going to be a gap in there between the time a city annexes property and a fire station is built.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. And I think this is brought up in several annexation plans, that there is an overlap in coverage time. I was just looking over the resolution, that Oslo Township, it is not a light switch. While we begin providing services, Oslo Township is still providing services there as well. It's not a light switch that happens. Another thing to mention, do we have inter-local agreements with Oslo Fire in case, for example, we need to send an ambulance there, but the Station 6 is already on a call somewhere?
Well, it works that way now.
Okay, so we already have an existing foundation in case something like that happens, so we can reach out to them, and they, I assume, reach out to us in case they need support as well.
Right. And I just want to emphasize, Oslo does a great job. What I'm saying is, we're just, at this point where our Station 6 is located, and Oslo is only about a mile north from where we are, we're both out of range right now for that northeast corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Very.
Chief? Yeah, I have a question. I'm very familiar with this area out there, a lot of fine new buildings and everything. Do the new buildings have better fire protection than some of our older buildings?
Absolutely, absolutely. State-of-the-art fire protection sprinkling systems. Looks like a thunderstorm with a lot of those bins. I was once an inspector. I've seen the videos on these different places. And the one Amazon is putting in, I'm not sure how anything would ever catch on fire in there and actually get going. It may start, but I don't know how it would ever spread. And that's the way, just with the new technology, even with our, with the RV Hall of Fame out there and stuff, just with the new technology and the new sprinkling systems, it's amazing what they can do.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Andrew, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye. Motion for third and final, please.
So moved.
Second.
And most of them, Ms. Hines, second by Mr. Fish. Andrew, would you read it by title? And do a roll call vote, please.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-14-R. An ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East Area A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. Ordinance is on first reading. Proposed ordinance 24-0-22. Would you read that by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-22. An ordinance amending ordinance 5283. An ordinance regulating illicit discharge and connections to the city of Elkhart stormwater system.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on a second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-23 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-23. An ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development established under ordinance numbers 3632, 3650, 3721 of the common council of the city of Elkhart, allow the conversion of two residential apartment units into professional offices and change in density for the PUD to be known as Ridgewood Apartments PUD.
Thank you. If no objections, I'll pass this on a second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-24?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-24. An ordinance annexing certain real estate described as vacant land situated to the east of the east end of Vernon Avenue and north of the 3300 block of Greenleaf Boulevard, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart.
If no objections, we'll pass this on a second reading. Read proposed ordinance 24-0-25 by title, please.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-25. An ordinance annexing, ordinance annexing repealing and replacing ordinance 5263, replacing section 21 and section 29.9B of ordinance 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on a second reading. Resolutions. Would you read proposed resolution 24-R-34 by title, please?
Proposed resolution.
Fourteen, not thirty-four.
Fourteen? Proposed resolution 24-R-14. A resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, recognizing the Elkhart Lions Club for its achievements and its contributions to the Elkhart community.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Motion to table this resolution.
Motion to table, second. All in favor, second if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. See where Brian got off the council. Okay, proposed resolution 24-R-15, please.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, I'm sorry. Mr. Crabtree, would you read this resolution in its entirety, please?
Resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, supporting Pollinator Week. Whereas pollinators, including birds, bees, butterflies, bats, and other insects, play a crucial role in the health of our ecosystems, contributing to the reproduction of over 85% of world's flowering plants and more than two-thirds of the world's crop species. And whereas pollinators are vital to our agricultural economy, enhancing the production of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and seeds, which are essential for human nutrition and food security. And whereas the city of Elkhart recognizes the importance of pollinators for our local environment, food supply, and economy, and acknowledges the need to support and protect these species. And whereas Pollinator Week is an annual event celebrated internationally to raise awareness about the importance of pollinators and to promote actions to protect and restore pollinator populations. And whereas during Pollinator Week, organizations, communities, and individuals are encouraged to engage in activities that support pollinator health, and such as planting native plants, reducing pesticide use, and creating pollinator-friendly habitats. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana. One, support Pollinator Week. The city of Elkhart hereby declares its support for Pollinator Week, celebrated from June 17 to June 23, 2024. Two, awareness and education. The city of Elkhart encourages public awareness and education about the importance of pollinators and its challenges they face. The city supports local events and initiatives that aim to protect and sustain pollinator populations. Three, the pollinator-friendly practices. The city of Elkhart commits to promoting and implementing pollinator-friendly practices, including planting of native species, reducing the use of harmful pesticides, and creating and maintaining habitats that support pollinators. Four, community engagement. The city of Elkhart invites residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to join in celebrating Pollinator Week by participating in activities that benefit pollinators, such as planting pollinator gardens, hosting educational events, and advocating for pollinator conservation. Five, partnerships. Five, partnerships with the City of Elkhart to, the City of Elkhart to collaborate with local environmental groups, educational institutions, and other stakeholders to enhance efforts to protect pollinators and promote sustainable, sustainable practices within the community. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk shall, is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Governor of the State of Indiana, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, and all other appropriate officials and agencies to demonstrate the City of Elkhart's commitment to pollinate, pollinator conservation.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish, any council discussion? Now, open up to the audience, anyone in the audience? I'll return it back to council floor. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
And Councilman Crabtree, you did a fine job reading that in its entirety.
Thank you.
At Westside Education, would you read proposed resolution 24-R-16 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-R-15, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provisions, provision of services to the area generally described as vacant land situated east of the east end of Vernon Avenue and north of the 3300 block of Greenleaf Boulevard, a proposed annexation area.
Get a motion and second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Ms. Hines, to adopt this resolution.
Good evening, Eric Trotter, Planning Department. The developer is proposing to, or has requested annexation at the east end of Vernon and north of Greenleaf Boulevard. The developer will be extending the utilities and the, they will be constructing the cul-de-sac at the end of Vernon to support the six of seven houses that will be built at the end of Vernon, and the one house built on Greenleaf will have its own driveway out to Greenleaf.
I have seen the development plan, and I realize we're just in the preliminary portion of it. My interest would be that the houses built would be the, at least equal to or greater than the current assessed value.
Okay. It will be.
That's really where I wanted to go. And then the, the partial size would be similar or average of the laterals as well.
It will be.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Mr. Michler.
Thank you. I'm aware that with like annexations, additional sidewalk placement is required often. Is there sidewalks to connect it to in that area, or is it just going to be kind of standalone?
There are no sidewalks currently in that part of the, of the city. We have not yet, the developer has not yet finished all of the engineering, and we are still kind of working through some of those details as far as the, the sidewalk itself.
Okay, thank you. And is there any concern from fire or EMS about range out there, or has there been any?
No, they are currently, it is literally at the end of Vernon, and they currently patrol both sites.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Eric. Open up to the public for a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll return it to the council floor. Council discussion. Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you please read proposed resolution 24-R-16 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-R-16, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the application for community development block grant funds and recommending submission of the application by the mayor for approval.
Motion and second for a...
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Crabtree, second by Ms. Hines, council discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening, Mary Casca, Community Development. So I just wanted to add that this resolution also ratifies the existing consolidated plan, which does end in 2025, and approves the fifth annual action plan that would lay out how these funds that are being allocated for, for our program year 24 would be spent. And we have learned that we are anticipating receiving $743,721 in program year 24, which starts July 1. So we are getting to the end of our five-year consolidated plan, which means that this fall we will be working on community engagement to develop a new five-year consolidated plan as required by HUD. So you will see some activity around developing a new five-year plan. And I do want to say that the allocation of these funds, a good portion of these funds are being allocated to housing and neighborhood development, and also to a public service, which are other not-for-profit recipients who then use those funds to benefit qualified individuals. We anticipate this year that over 1,000 individuals will benefit through the public service allocation of these funds.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Hanky? I've taken over, Arvis has stepped away.
So my, my questions are simply this. Home buyer's assistance, can you, is it still a $5,000 match on down payment, or what is that home buyer's assistance program?
Yeah, that would be a program through La Casa, which provides direct benefit, direct benefit to the home buyer, and it covers closing costs and down payment.
So it's, the CDBG amount is $49,500, is that correct?
Yes, that would provide up to three $15,000 down payment assistance, second mortgages, and the difference would be for administrative cost.
You're saying logistically that that is administrated through La Casa?
La Casa. This is the exact same thing we did this year with four homes through La Casa, $15,000 each, which was $60,000. And there are four new homes and four new homeowners in Elkhart.
So 15,000 times three people, right? Three homes comparative, comparative to, and so my overall question about this, the CDBG has been going on for nearly 30 years now, and it's roughly been 750 to a million dollars over all these years. And the CDBG area has actually grown a little bit, so as always, and you're getting to another five-year mark of plan, how do you measure success?
Well, it, we are required to monitor the recipients of our, of our funds, particularly the public service recipients. So there's monitoring about the people that are being benefited with the funds. For example, council on aging, we provide funds that assist seniors with transportation. And so they're required to report to us how many seniors and verify that these are income-qualified people. So we get those stats. And then all of our owner-occupied rehab are, again, income-qualified people, and the renovations that we do or the rehabilitations are meant to make the homes safe and livable.
So with that said, how does one plan to buy a home, and how lengthy of a process is it to get access to 15,000 since there's just three available?
So the, the, these particular funds through La Casa are really being targeted to the homes that they're building. So they're, so while they're building these homes through that process, they're taking applications and vetting people in anticipation of the homes being completed, and those homeowners being required to get mortgages to acquire these homes.
So again, we're just, we're really benefiting La Casa and its ability to turn over houses with an extra $15,000, as opposed to the city running a program through HUD or someone else, and offering $5,000 match assistance for down payments.
Well, I think it's the difference between offering the assistance on existing homes, which would be a whole different process, as you pointed out. I think it would be more, more complicated, and I think what La Casa is doing is they're, they're requiring people go through homeownership counseling, financial counseling, and preparing them to become homeowners.
Is all that counseling, not to interrupt, is all that counseling provided by La Casa?
Yes. And that's what some of the difference in the funds go to support.
And, and I simply just see that as a cornering of the market, as it were, because of the, the amount of taxes used on the other side of La Casa properties, you know, to supplement that income when they provide lower-than-rent rates, yet they can charge the government for the remaining amount, and yet we're supplementing their home sales. And I appreciate more habitat that turns over and helps and gains assistance. They don't have their fingers in all the pots, but La Casa, on the other hand, is all the way along the, along the way, and they're into city, county, and state funds, as well as federal funds for housing, so. Continuously, La Casa.
Mr. Michler.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. I see we have Maple City Health on here, and I believe that facility is located in Goshen.
Yes.
How are we determining that those funds are used by residents?
They provide services to quite a few people in the south-central Elkhart neighborhood.
Okay, okay, so we're, addresses are checked and everything like that before? Okay, excellent, thank you.
Which is why they approached us and made their request.
Okay. Now, if it's, it's okay, I, I just briefly talk through the funds here and where they're going, because I think it's important to, to have this conversation. There's a lot of discussion in our community about supporting some members of the homeless community and others, and I, and what the city is doing to try to help that situation. And I think going through this will, will kind of help shed some light on what we're trying to do to improve our community through these numbers here. So $10,000 is going towards HIV-positive clients to assist them with housing. $23,000 to go towards seniors and transportation through the Council on Aging, to the, to medical appointments and other needed appointments. $20,000 towards the YWCA Safe Haven Program, and this is for victims of domestic violence. $10,000 to Maple City Health to help uninsured or underinsured residents of our community. $288,477 to help rehabilitate residential units. $10,000 for fair housing education in our community to help fight housing discrimination. $100,000 for neighborhood revitalization improvements. Now, before I keep going, quick question on that, because I'm sure Tori wants all of that. But how are we making sure that this money is kind of distributed to, you know, parks or whatever other agencies might, government or non-governmental that might utilize this?
So at this point, what we're doing is we're sort of like allocating in buckets. So yeah, except for the public service that you, you were itemizing, we're really quite flexible with the public facilities. I believe we have a request from Tulsa for ADA playground equipment. Some of that will go to support that. That leaves still about $90,000. So we are open, we want it, we wanted to be flexible and have access to those funds to do things like sidewalks, water lines, alleys, that sort of thing, in targeted neighborhoods in Elkhart.
So. Thank you.
We just have some flexibility with, with how the funds are spent.
That sounds good. There you go, Jamison.
And leverage.
To keep going, quickly, there's only a few more. $7,000 towards Goodwill's Beating the Odds to Self-Sufficiency, which is a job training and upskilling program to help people get better jobs. $30,000 to blight and disaster remediation. I know Councilman Hanky and I have discussed in the past how to deal with some of these blighted properties, so it's good to see some money here going towards that. $49,500 for home buyer assistance that was mentioned earlier. $13,000 to the Boys and Girls Club Kids Care Program, which will help before and after-school programs at the Boys and Girls Club. I think that's very cool we are doing that. $10,000 to support the St. James Food Pantry.
Actually, that's $12,000.
$12,000 to support the St. James Food Pantry. $60,000 for commercial exterior improvements for neighborhood commercial buildings. What, how does, if there is a commercial building, property owner interested in that program, who do they go through or contact for that?
They would call the Community Development Department.
Community Development? Thank you. And lastly, $6,000 for emergency rental programs to help those facing an emergency.
Yeah, I do want to touch on that just quickly. This is something new, our, our staff is, would like to try, and working with like Faith Mission and Guidance Ministry and people that they work with as, as cases of homeless people who are ready to perhaps move into an apartment but don't have the down payment.
Okay.
So this would be working with those agencies to assist people who are ready to make that move and need a little bit of help to just cover the down payment. So that's what, that's what those funds would be targeting.
Thank you. So 700 to 800,000 to help fight homelessness, to fight domestic violence, to support kids in before and after-school programs, reduce neighborhood blight. You know, this is kind of what it's all about, folks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you, that, Dwight Fish, we're going to have a five-minute recess. I see people squirming. So why don't we do that, make a five or 10-minute recess? Turn this meeting back to, or, any more questions for Sherri? No. Who? Mary. Why do I keep saying Sherri? Sherri Crass.
He's sleepy.
Sherri Crass. That's what I'm thinking of. Okay. Any questions, David?
Yeah, the concern continues. You know, the laws have changed in healthcare transportation July 1st of last year. So even Council on Aging, as well as all others, get reimbursement and now have reimbursement contracts with all healthcare facility providers around the community. In fact, we pay them a considerable amount every month. We use them. So we're, we're pretty redundant. I'm just letting you know, I'm not opposed to helping. That's what I do in life. That's what I've done as a career. But I also know the bigger help is to get people on their own. So when we say people don't, are uninsured, that's a choice, because everyone has access to insurance. The best thing we can do for them is send them through Medicaid process, and that's a little bit more complicated, but that's something that we should be helping with. So I would rather generate money to give insurance counseling, to get people signed up for insurance that would pay at Heart City and Goshen Health, and no matter where they go, they would have insurance. We, we try our best with homeless. If they can stay with us for 30 days, we can get them Medicaid-approved, and they can go anywhere they wish and be covered and not have to feel as though they're failing healthcare-wise based on their finances. But I'm saying that, so we've got, what, $15,000 towards that. We have $13,000 to Council on Aging? No, it's more than that.
Twenty-three.
Yeah. So Council on Aging be, is now becoming a fairly profitable agency, and they have grown their fleet because the law changed, like I said, July 1st of last year. So I don't think we're keeping up with that, and I don't think people are keeping us appraised of their newfound revenue. I personally have helped somebody locally fund, start a new transportation company. It's called Gentleman's Transportation. Some of you may know James Shorter. I used to be a semi-pro boxer, and now he owns a transportation company. And that's because the law changed, and he can bill direct to us, because he was otherwise not Medicaid-covered. So we get paid by Medicaid, and we pay it back to the transportation companies direct in cash. So a lot of this, I find, is redundant and outdated. And I'm not sure who doesn't keep up with those things, but we're talking about $40,000, $50,000 that you'd say, well, is there a better use? And I'm here to say, as a healthcare professional, getting people Medicaid-applied is the best thing we can do for them.
Universal health.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you very much. I'm going to close that and open up to the public. For the public hearing, you may have a seat.
Thomas Klegia again, 500 State Street. So I just reviewed with Mary. I appreciate her time going over this. I had the pleasure of going to a Strong Towns meeting, and they had showed an example of a town where they would do matching funds through their block grant funds. They, you know, what we struggle with in Elkhart, if I want to do something, I got to form a non-for-profit. And I'm just wondering if there isn't an existing non-for-profit or, you know, even the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, I'm wondering if there isn't high school seniors that could benefit from, you know, some small business training, education, maybe starting some small business to do just general maintenance in town. But, you know, the Strong Towns Initiative talked about where, and I can, I can bring up the example, it's probably on record, maybe you guys already know about it if you were there, but where the, the city would match. So, you know, the, the small neighborhood group, you know, they're not non-for-profits, so they can't really start this on their own. But if the city did it kind of citywide, and then these neighborhood groups could kind of come together and five or six, or set, set some parameters and do matching funds. So if each neighbor spent $500 on landscaping, or they, whatever they, whatever the neighbors got together and did, they pitched their proposals. I mean, this town has hundreds coming in, and then they, they award out the winners. And so they put a little skin in, and they get, they get, they get it matched. And I just kind of wonder if, if through a little sweat equity and creating a program for this, I mean, I don't know what, what all the departments do. I mean, there's, gosh, there's $150,000 of administrative. There's probably somebody in town that's already a non-for-profit that could help, you know, execute this. But I see $288,000. If we set up a program where, where the homeowners match that, now we've just taken it from 288 to over half a million dollars of improvement throughout the community. Instead of it being allocated out through worst possible case scenarios where they're paying for contractors to do the work, the city, the return to the neighborhood is a lot smaller then. So if the homeowner, sure, there's people in dire need, but what about the in-between, right? So we have the average homeowner who's in-between things, family, you know, they get out there with their kids, they show the ki, there's just so many ways that involving the homeowner before it gets to the point that they can't do anything. And then that money goes farther. Instead of it stopping with, you know, we just got to figure out a way to make the money go farther, because when we, when we write checks, it just seems to stop. So I can, I'll try to email Mary. I'll try to email that to you. Maybe you already know of it. I think you might have been there. But it's kind of goofy. You have to be these 301Cs, and who has time to do that? I mean, we can't even hardly get people to come to the UDO. You know, the Unified Ordinance Meeting was not well-attended because it was, you know, at 5:30, and it's just close to work. And, you know, I don't know how we get people involved, but, I mean, it comes from you guys. Some of you guys are in neighborhood, you know, groups and stuff. And, boy, if you guys had $10,000 to, in your neighborhood group that could be allocated, I mean, that could turn into 20. All of a sudden, $20,000 on the street means more than, you know, having a contractor come out and put a wheelchair ramp in. Sure, that one person needs a wheelchair ramp, but, but should they, you know, maybe their house should be sold to a family of four, homebuyer program, and they get their money, they get their investment back, and there's a better solution for them. We just can't keep doing the same thing constantly, over and over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Sign that. We turn it back to the council floor. The other discussion. Sign that. Angie, would you?
Thank you, Mary, for what the Community Development is doing. And I do know, in regards to the health insurance, a lot of people are in-between open enrollment and in-between getting on Medicare. So some are in that in-between where they need the Council on Aging to go to the doctor. And I appreciate the efforts that you have done and help people in that in-between stage. And also with the, the down payment needed for mortgage, you know, mortgage, that is a blessing to a lot of people. And I just want to praise you and the department for doing that. But I understand the process it takes for a person to get on Medicare, you know, being on, how long it takes to disability and all of that. So I appreciate that.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. President, just a correction of that. It's not Medicare, it's Medicaid.
Thank you.
Medicare, yeah. You have to have, be on Medicare, and speaking on reference to Medicare Advantage Plan that will pay for transportation if they choose to. There's different options. So it's another side of health insurance.
Same thing financially. If, if you don't qualify, if you're using up your money, you do qualify for Medicaid, go through the process. It is three months retroactive that we can help you out.
It's still a process.
Most buildings can help you out.
I was just thanking her, but thank you.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one.
All right. Angie, would you read proposed resolution, proposed resolutions, R-7, 24-R-17 through 24 dash, through R-24, no, that's 24-R-33. And we, that's, yeah. Yeah, just read them individually.
Drew Wines, Economic, oh, sorry.
Not yet, Drew. I mean, unless you're going to tell us something that's going to make us not have to read all third, how many are there?
A lot.
A lot of these resolutions.
Well, I'll go ahead and speak out.
Okay. All right, Angie, would you read, would you start reading those resolutions? And we will be passed them on first reading and assigning them to the tax abatement, formerly Tax Abatement Committee. And I'll do that as we do each one. So you may begin, Ms. McGee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-17, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-8-19, R-9-19, and R-10-19.
Thank you. This will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-18, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alliance RV LLC, Three Creek LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-08-21, R-13-21, and R-14-21.
Thank you. There's no objections. It will pass first reading and be assigned to the committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-19, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Alpha Systems LLC, DBS LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-43-20, R-24-20, and R-25-20.
No objections. They'll be passed on first reading and assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-20, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether American Millwork LLC, Nickel Properties I LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits, personal property, and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-07-21, R-11-21, and R-12-21.
No objection. It will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-21, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether American Technology Components Incorporated, ATC, 1127 Miles Avenue LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-52-21, R-55-21, and R-56-21.
There are no objections. It will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-22, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Big Dog Adhesives LLC, 435 Properties LLC, and 615 Properties LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits, personal property, and the memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-19-21, R-23-21, and R-24-21.
No objections. It will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-23, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Flexible Concepts, Inc., are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits, personal property, and the memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-51-21, R-57-21, and R-58-21.
Thank you. There are no objections. It will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
R-24-24, or 24-R-24, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether E O Z Business LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-37-20, R-39-20, and R-40-20.
Thank you. If there are no objections, it will be assigned, it will pass first reading and be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-25, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marine Realty LLC, DBA Bennington Marine South, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-44-22, R-48-22, and R-49-22.
Thank you. If there are no objections, it will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-26, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether TP Sanitary Supply, Inc., T5 LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-50-20, R-54-20, and R-55-20.
No objections. It shall be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-27, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Champion Manufacturing, Inc., CR17 Land Development LLC, are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-41-19, R-42-19, and R-43-19.
No objections. It will be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-28, a resolution Proposed Resolution 24-R-28, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether C T S Corporation are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-03-19, R-04-19, and R-05-19.
No objections. She'll be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-29, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Chemcrest LLC, La Isla Bonita Properties LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-47-16, R-49-16, and R-50-16.
No objections. She'll be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-30, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Marsan International LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-04-22, R-06-22, and R-07-22.
No objections. She'll be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-31, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Playcon Corporation is in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-14-20, R-27-20, and R-28-20.
No objections. She'll be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution 24-R-32, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether Truma Corp., 42K Real Estate LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-04-18, R-09-18, and R-10-18.
No objections. She'll be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee.
Proposed Resolution R-24-R-33, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, determining whether F F U S Acquisition Corporation, D B A Tuscany Motor Company, T L M T G Properties LLC are in substantial compliance with its Statement of Benefits forms and memorandum of agreement approved under Resolution Numbers R-50-18, R-53-18, and R-54-18.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this shall be assigned to the Tax Abatement Committee. Vacation hearings of the new business, all the tax abatements, we'll probably have a special call meeting. Just, that will be the only thing on the agenda as opposed to trying to do it at a regular council meeting. So, once the committee meets, comes back with some recommendations, we can sit down and talk about other new business. Mr. Hanke.
I'll try to be brief. There's a bit. So I would like to see the code enforcement that Thomas had talked about. I would say that we've got to do something on Prairie where cars are parked in the tree lawns on a daily basis. 1904, 1908, 1720, 1708. Just unkempt, trashy. When the city is making improvements in that general area, we should have a greater expectation. I did ask at the last meeting or the meeting prior that we would have, I don't know if Mike Huber is still on, but some understanding of the commerce measure for Patriot Railroad. What do they actually bring to the city? What is their operational cost? Delay railroad? And the city just put in $1.2 million to improve their business. I'm wondering how it pays back the community. I'm gonna keep asking for those things. I did observe today, and I hope that we would take it under consideration, but on Windsor Court at the entrance to Menards and those areas, we had four city workers in two trucks mowing the Meridian, very unsafe. They had to stop and wait for traffic. There was homeless people soliciting donations at the same time. Quite a mix-up. And I was hopeful, if the city's gonna manage that, that we would actually maybe look at paving over that area so we don't have to maintain the responsibility. It may also improve in the wintertime with getting rid of snow. But right now, putting those mowers in that area for people, I just found it dangerous for our staff. And we have been, and another thing, it has been, a lot of money being spent lately and on roads and improvements, but let's be mindful. Several years ago, people on Circle Avenue in Manor, their basements are flooding now routinely, every rain, because the city corrected a level of storm sewer collection. And now the water table has raised and it raised into the level of their homes on a regular basis. Unhealthy, unsanitary, all of those things. And you would think that with all the money being spent, that we would look at those people, talk about their health and their value of property. And I know I've included the city on those emails, the mayor, Brad, Torrey, anyone else. But if I was a homeowner, boy, I'd be tired of that stuff. There is a parade of homes from bail construction right on that corner, and yet, three doors down is where the flooding starts. And that is in some pretty expensive real estate. We ought to be able to help these people out. I'd also like to know, I saw the city ambassador vehicles, and I would like to know if those are employees, if the, who paid for the trucks? And where does the budget come from for those trucks? They're, they're unique in their color and so on. But I just wanna understand liability a little bit better. I see through redevelopment, the cost of Oakland Avenue project and order changes to the tune of $430,000. So it would be interesting to see how large that project has grown and how close to the cap of budget we are for the Oakland Avenue project. The other part that affects a property that I manage, the total cost of the walk path, including land or whatever acquisitions we did to Benham and Mitchell Walker Road, not saying it's a bad thing, I think a lot of people will use that. It makes it safer. Not worried about that part. It is a matter of contract and cost comparison to the same amount of money helping the people with flooding basements on a daily basis every time it rains. So they obviously have a lot of flooding at this moment. I did ask, when we were on the proposal for the M A I appraiser, appraisals, the two that the city received, whether other council people wanted or not, you know, but I do want The consistency of the code enforcement, I think I mentioned that. The other part that was brought to my attention was the number of food vendors, trucks and carts on streets, the bell ringing and how does the county, the county says they don't get calls, but they are supposed to be regulated as far as their sanitation. Even the food trucks have to be regulated through the county health department. And I don't know, because the county said they're not getting that from the city, whether we have to call those in every time. I'm not sure what we're supposed to be doing there, but I think for the safety of our residents and who's making this food and selling it out of carts, we should probably do something. Because today, carts are out there and it's 95, 97 degrees, and they're not refrigerated. So I'm not sure what's all happening there. And then, I talked about ambulance billing. That's been going on now for greater than seven months. John told me he was gonna get that information, and I have the text messages, and that's three and a half months ago. And so whether it's that messed up that we can't find it, we can't produce it, we're embarrassed by it, whatever happens, we just need the information so we can improve a process. So I think those are valid requests, whether I have to go through the state department to gain access, but I think waiting seven months is long enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, I have some good news about our great city. Some good news, some positive stuff. The Jazz Fest is this weekend. So we want everybody, I know it's gonna be hot, so we want you to stay hydrated. We're also having a celebration for Allen Strike at the city aid rooms, starting at 6 o'clock. The mayor's gonna present key to the city to him and thank him for all his services. Angie, am I missing something? Well, it starts at 6:30. Yes, it does, start at 6:30. 6:30 is correct. The mayor's gonna do the opening at 6 o'clock. So yes, Angie was giving me the stink eye. So yes, you did it correct. And so there are a lot of great things going on. This past weekend was the car show. There was a car show out at the RV Hall of Fame. There were just parties everywhere, graduation parties. So it was, it was a good time to be in Elkhart last weekend. And moving forward, it's gonna look even better with some of the things that we're doing. And we need to highlight those things when we talk to our constituents. Are we perfect? No. Nobody is. But we're the envy of a lot of cities in this state because of our financial stability, our economic climate, you know, our people working together, you know, to do what's best for the city of Elkhart in a nonpartisan way, but making sure we're representing our entire constituency. So let's have a great weekend. Mr. Curry.
You're right. I think we are the envy of a lot of cities, and I think that's why they buy these houses and allow them to sit in our neighborhoods and be eyesores. And I think it's time for us to really put some pressure on them, especially the one on Leonard Avenue, right by Perry Kirkendall's house. Perry has been down here at least three or four times about that house. That house is still vacant. Squatters has broke into it. Our police have to go there and run them off. You know, that house should be pushed over. And if I had the power to have it pushed over tomorrow, I would, because people that own it don't live in Elkhart. Like you said, they don't, they don't care about our city. But we need to step up and create an ordinance where we can push them over after maybe two or three years or, well, six months is probably enough. But, you know, we need to just step up and do something about that, because I rode by there the other day just to see what the condition was, and Perry was sitting there and saw me going by. So I wouldn't be surprised if he called you soon.
Any other new business? Any other new business? Mr.?
I just wanted to say that going to the farmer's market every Saturday morning is a highlight for me. And again, it is a great place to be all weekend. There's something to do right now. I really appreciate it. So thank you, Jameson, for the work on that.
Okay, Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. One thing real quick is we have a lot of heat coming on. I'm sure we're all experiencing that. I encourage everyone to stay hydrated. If you don't have anywhere to go, you can dial the city non-emergency number, and they can provide transportation to cooling centers. So I encourage anyone facing that situation to reach out for help, and we will do what we can to help you out. Speaking of good news, we're bringing roller skating back, I don't know if you heard, to Nibco Park. So I encourage everyone to check out the Elkhart Parks Department Facebook page and their website for more information and hopefully stay safe and stay cool down there as well.
Thank you. Okay, reports of Mayor Board of Works, Borough Safety, City Department heads.
Thanks for all the work you did tonight, council. I know it's been a long night. I think that Councilman Dawson mentioned the Jazz Fest just a moment ago. I want to let you know that there are some amazing entertainers coming in for the Jazz Fest. Please make sure that you spend some time downtown. Spend some time at the Jazz Fest. It's gonna be a wonderful Jazz Fest. As a matter of fact, Danny is holding your tickets and passes that, that we give the council during that time. So you'll be able to get those tonight so that you'll have them and can make plans to see what you think you'd like to see. Also, we take the time and the Development Services Department, and they invite developers to come to Elkhart during that time and be a part of the Jazz Fest. And we're going to do that again. And so we want to make sure to let them know that this is the best time to come to Elkhart and see what we have going on here. And if we're spick and span clean, it's during this, during this weekend. In addition to that, I was talking to Christie about how we are going to prepare for the chillers, chilling stations, as, as well as obviously trying to keep people safe, hydrated, and cool during this time. So definitely want you to make sure we take advantage of that and, and invite as many people down and make sure that you're out during that time. The Wednesday is Juneteenth as well, which is a holiday for the city of Elkhart and the country as well. And there are a couple of Juneteenth celebrations going on. Tulsa had one this past weekend, but there's one at the library and also one at Roosevelt Park. And so if you feel so inclined to come out to, to Juneteenth, please do. Also, I want to make sure that as we think through before the next council meeting, we have a Let's Talk Tuesday, next Tuesday, that's at, that's Center for the First District, right? Okay. And so, and so that's coming up. You, all of you mentioned all of these events that we're starting to gear up and, and go through. And, and I'm telling you, there are quite a few. And if you, if you don't get out to them, it, it would, it would be helpful for you to tell others to get out to them. Because that, I happened to go to the market this weekend as well, and we were able to get some flowers and a few other things that I found as a surprise to Gina and I that they were available. So that farmer's market is a wonderful growth opportunity for us as well. And so let's not forget that, that we're doing all of this as it relates to trying to move towards quality of place, quality of life in the city. And quite frankly, by all, by all measures, it seems to be continuing to accelerate. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And kudos to all our city workers, building, street grounds, building and grounds. They do a great job of setting up, cleaning up, preparation, you know, it's two weeks, a week in between Jazz Fest and Rhapsody and all the plannings that go on downtown and the preparation for the thousands of people. So kudos to our city staff. Neighborhood Association reports. Mr. Curry.
On behalf of the Pomeran Neighborhood Association, we've met on the ninth, which was the second Sunday. We normally meet on the first Sunday, and we meet this time of the year outside. And we had a great meeting. We had some visitors come. Mrs. Bannon came, and it was good to see her. And we talked about the issues of our community, and a lot of good things are going on in our community. Everybody's talking about, one of our neighbors, she graduated from high school, and we planned to give her a nice gift on behalf of the members of the Neighborhood Association, and she was there. And also, we plan, was planning our picnic, but the only, one of the only concerns is we have a few neighbors that's having way too many yard sales every weekend. And I told them, there is an ordinance to that effect. I just gotta brush up on it and see how many you can have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Latony, Ms. King.
I want to thank everyone for calling in, taking advantage of the 311. Thank you for facilitating that and getting everybody taken care of. And on June 26, we will be having one of them. I'm sorry, Aspire by Elkhart, June 26, by the mayor at Ulri Park, June 26, from 6:00 to 8:00, Bring Your Lawn Cheers. There will be refreshments, and we're looking forward. I apologize for not having that list, but we're looking forward to scheduling community cleanups, and we will keep you up.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
The Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association, we met on June 4 in the South Triangle of the Strong Avenue and Highland Avenue. Our guest was Mayor Robertson, kind of gave us a mini State of the City. We had about 42 people in attendance, which was great. They came out specifically to hear the mayor's vision, talking to our Neighborhood Association, one, about how important Neighborhood Associations are. They truly are the heartbeat and the soul of our communities. We had our Neighborhood Garage Sale on the 7th and 8th, which is always the first Saturday of the month of June. And then this past weekend, we had our neighborhood, we had a neighborhood cleanup, which was sponsored by the city. I know they've been moving throughout the various districts, so ours was June 15, just this past Saturday. this past Saturday. It went very well, and neighbors, you know, express our concerns and issues and get things taken care of. So again, it all goes back to the center of the neighborhood. Also, Mr. President, if I can tag, tag on that, I wanted to remind individuals that June, July 4 is coming up, so if they could hear and pay attention to the city's fireworks resolution, I think, ordinance, I'm sorry, which I think mirrors that of the states, because we want to ensure that's there to ensure everyone has a safe and enjoyable experience within the city. And also, a kudos to Public Works, Tori Irwin and his staff. I was able to attend, as many of my colleagues here did, attend their Public Works presentation to the council and to the public. I got there early and, and did a tour, it was myself and Alex. Laura Colo did a tour. Having served two terms on the Board of Public Works, I'm still amazed of all the good things and the intricacy, the details, and the volume that our Public Works does. Tori should be commended, as well as the entire staff, because I'm very appreciative, and thank them for the service that they do for the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
Eastlake Neighborhood Association, I generally don't comment on those things. However, Jan Colley, our president, had some issues, and she has called the city about, thank you to the police department for stepping up and stepping in to the vandalism at our park and lake. However, we do have a couple of houses that are running businesses out of their homes. It's a zoning issue. We've had a zoning coordinator there, and it hasn't gone well. We also have a couple of illegally parked trailers that are disallowed by city ordinance, as well as HOA guidelines, and we need some help on that. John Esper helped us a couple of years ago, but it took two years to get that accomplished. We just don't want to go down that path again. So, I am asking, and I did send out emails to both the mayor, I think Brad, and zoning and Eric, and whoever I could send to, to try to get that stuff handled. I'm not sure his ranking, but young blood did a, did a fine job in our neighborhood. We would like to know, however, how do we become a part of the city cleanup effort, and what does that entail? So I would be interested in alerting my team about that.
Thank you. Like I say always, you shouldn't wait until this council meeting, you know, pick up the phone, everybody. Pick it up, you know, we want to be solutions to the problems, not solutions looking for problems. We want to make sure that we're active in doing those kind of things throughout our entire city. So, is there, can I get a scheduling of, no, it's a privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll return it back to the council. Scheduling of committee meetings, there will be a tax abatement, committee meeting on Wednesday, June 26, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Acceptance of communication. Could I get a motion to accept communications?
So move.
A motion by Mr. Chadtree, second by Mr. Michler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pole, same sign. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Michler, second by Mr. Crabtree. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.